Good evening to all. On November 6th, the people of Panol will have an opportunity to elect three persons to serve on their city council. There are seven candidates that have placed their names and nominations seeking your support to serve. All seven were invited to participate in this forum with one asking to be excused due to a business commitment and two more declining the invitation. Tonight, we have four of the seven that will try to explain to you why they are the best candidates for the council. They are Tim Benwellis, Maureen Tombs, Norma Martinez-Rubin, and Rafael Minas. We want to thank the city of Panol for providing this fine facility and to Panol TV for broadcasting this on Comcast Channel 28 as well as online. Without the help of city manager Michelle Fitzher, Rosa Acosta, and Lorraine Hartnett from the city clerk's office, and Dave Snell of Panol TV, none of this would have been possible. I also want to thank Luke Schalls and Zoya Alam who will be operating the time and devices tonight. My name is Don Gosny and I will be moderating this forum. I was born and raised here in West County. I currently serve as the chairman of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee overseeing the construction of the beautiful new Panol Valley High School. I administer the Ivy Lakes Connection Scholarship Program and provide college opportunities to a great many Panol students, and I leave a very high percentage of my retirement income in the stores here in Panol. I've been a journalist worldwide for 42 years and I also own an online newspaper in Richmond, Radio Free Richmond. When election season comes around, I assist with local candidate forums wherever needed. This will be my 27th forum this season. I've spoken with city staff and numerous Panol residents about the issues and have drafted 13 questions to ask our candidates tonight. Because we will be very pressed for time, we will not be able to take questions from the audience. I apologize for the repetitive theme of most of these questions because they have to do with money or the lack thereof. Each candidate will be afforded a 90-second opening and closing statement and will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question. To the candidates, just because you're given a minute and a half to respond, if you don't have anything substantive to say, then you're allowed to use less time. How are you all doing tonight?
Good.
Are you ready to have some fun?
Sure.
Okay, so everyone is clear? Those will be the simplest questions asked tonight. All right? Many of these questions are multi-part questions, so to help the candidates keep track of the questions, immediately prior to the opening, they were given copies so they can follow along. Before now, no one has seen these questions. I promised Panol TV that we'd be finished and gone by 8:00 PM, so if we run short of time, we may need to trim a question or two from the list. As to the candidates were polled and they decided that the order of responses will be in random order, and unless so, let's begin with our opening statements. Mr. Benwellis.
Thanks, Don. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm Tim Benwellis. I am currently the mayor. This is my second time being mayor, and I've been on the city council for nine years. In those nine years, we went from barely hanging on, dangerously close to bankruptcy, to being able to put it together. During that time, we were able to build our reserve, which a lot of people told us were nuts, but we were able to build the things back and now we're beginning to reap the rewards. Revenues are up, property values went back up, and so things are looking better. And now we're in a position to start to put some things back. When you're on the city council, you split 14 different committees amongst the five of us. I've been on the West Cap Committee, I've been on the Wastewater Committee, I've been in CBOC. When you're mayor, you go to the Mayor's Conference, you go to the League of Cities. Let's see, what else have I done? Those are the ones I think of right now because I'm really nervous. You'd think I'd be used to being on TV like this, but you know, still have other questions. Other than Maureen having a fast second place right behind me, I have the most experience here. So I hope that you all will vote for me and so I can keep going with the things that we need to do here to keep Panol the small town that we all love. Thank you.
Mr. Minas.
Hello. My name is Rafael Minas. I'm a candidate for city council in Panol. I'm running for Panol City Council because I believe that we need to secure Panol's financial future. Right now, I feel like people think, people know, not just think, but there's a disconnect between them and their government. They don't see the concrete benefits that government brings about to their day-to-day lives because the government doesn't make it as obvious as it should what benefits improvised to the community. I think that the city government should work to improve its communication with the community, that it should work to seek out new sources of revenue to deal with its existing liabilities, and also to enable new concrete signs of what the city does for the community, such as extending hours for the city library and reopening fire station 74 in Panol Valley. I believe that's all I really need to say in an opening statement, so thank you for your time.
We thank you very much then, Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
Hello, everyone. I'm Norma Martinez-Rubin, and thank you for joining us this evening or tonight. I am pleased to be here and have made it to this point of running as a candidate for the Panol City Council. The question is to tell you what makes me most qualified to be a candidate to serve on the council. I have background in public health and business administration. In the past 30 years, I have served in county health departments as well as state agencies and worked as an independent program evaluator assessing the effectiveness of programs in publicly funded agencies to determine how best they can serve their constituents. Whether it's a nonprofit, a government agency, or a foundation, the interest is always about community and how best to serve them, particularly when there are limited resources. I look forward to continuing to serve in that way. My volunteer experience includes nine years on the planning commission, being on the Oversight Board, the CBOC with West Unified School District, and most recently, I joined the county's adult literacy program, always in the interest of serving the public. Thank you for your interest and continuing support, and I look forward to this debate.
Ms. Tombs.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I'm Maureen Tombs, and I'm a candidate for Panol City Council. I began serving on the council in 2015 to fill a vacancy. I ran unopposed in 2016 for the remaining two years of the term, and I asked for your vote in November. I was raised in Panol and attended Panol schools before going off to college. My husband and I raised our three children here in Panol, and we became quite involved with the community. I worked on the Amber Park Development Committee, the committee to help keep the Panol Swim Center open when funds were so depleted that it really risked closure. I was a volunteer parent for 20 years with the Panol Seals, and during that time, I earned, I was honored to receive two Parent Awards during my time there. My husband and I ran the Little League, Panol Hercules Little League Challenger Division for 10 years, and I'm currently a swim coach with Special Olympics. I have been involved in schools, served on the CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Board, and all aspects of parent organizations with the school system. And I also served on the Planning Commission from 2097 to 2015.
We thank you very much. Many of you touched on some of the things that were being asked in the very first question, so it's up to you whether to repeat them or to cede your time so we have more questions at the end. The first question, and we're going to start with Ms. Tombs. There are seven of you running for three seats on the council. Two of you are incumbents. Please tell us what makes you the most qualified candidate to serve on the council. Have you served on any committees or commissions? Have you given back to your community? If you're an incumbent, please explain why you should be retained. If you're a newbie, tell us why the voters should throw the incumbents out and replace them with you.
Thank you. I'll continue. I previously talked about the committees and commissions that I've been involved in, so I think the next step is to tell you about my work experience. I'm currently a land use planner for a governmental jurisdiction and have been for over 25 years. In that capacity, I work on financing, developing, maintaining, and planning public infrastructure. I work on commercial and residential development, including some transit-oriented developments that are models in the state. I also work on climate change issues and resiliency issues. If we know about the North Bay fires, we know about climate issues, we know that we really need to address those issues here in Panol. And as far as staying on the council, I have been working with the existing council on trying to identify some stabilized funding sources, start bringing back some programs and services that were lost during the Great Recession, and I would like to continue to do that. But we need a stable income-revenue source in order to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Minas.
I think that when you're looking at the qualifications for who belongs on the council, the most important qualifications aren't necessarily how many connections a candidate has in the community, or their experience on the council, or in the private sector, or on various committees and associations, but rather, it's a question of character. As a candidate and as a council member, can you listen to people in the community, hear their concerns, hear what they have to say to you, even if you might disagree, and understand why they're saying it? Can you persuade people that what you want to do as a council member, your various goals and priorities, are what should in fact happen? Can you formulate those plans and goals? Can you develop a process to create the goals that you want, to generate the goals, and to implement them? I would argue that I possess all of these qualities. I'm working on listening through engaging with people on social media and interacting with various community groups and through canvassing. I've shown problem-solving skills through my work to convert the city's budget from a PDF to a spreadsheet format, and I believe that I will show my persuasive abilities over time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Benwellis.
Rafael, you brought up something really interesting in this listing. I'm an architect. I've been in the architecture business for 39 years, 21 years of that being licensed. I listen for a living. I also problem-solve. I problem-solve on a large scale, and I problem-solve bits and pieces. When you're on the city council, you are a combination of a visionary and a custodian. And so you have to problem-solve and see the big picture all at the same time. I believe I can do that, and I think I've done that for the last nine years. In terms of getting back to the community, I actually did some, a couple or three projects. I designed the community corner and the sign, and I actually designed the seating inside the community theater. I should be retained because a couple of years, I'm going to be the one with institutional memory, because I'm going to be the old guy. For a long time, I was a newbie myself, and it's funny to be on the beginning of the other end of that now. And I've seen a lot of stuff. You know, we literally went from zero to bouncing back, and it wasn't just one of us that did it, it was a combination of all of us. We all were very different, but we all were able to work together. And I pledge to whoever is on the council that gets elected, including me, that I will be working the same way with all our council members, new and the ones that are going to be with us still for a while. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Norma Martinez-Rubin.
In the 30 years or so that I've been in public health, and most recently about 12 years as an independent program evaluator, it's always been about trying to determine what best serves a community. My formal training is in public health and business administration. I have master's degrees in both, and I also have a bachelor's degree in biology. All to say that I've been trained to do some critical thinking, and applying what I have learned has had me be amongst people that have different interests or different stakes in a given project or how public resources are used. And so I am one that believes in service orientation and service-oriented leadership, and as a profession, I have been in the role of facilitator to encourage the involvement of parties with different interests and often different values, all in the context of publicly-funded programs. I bring to the council program planning, project management, key partnership development skills, and that group facilitation that I mentioned. And I don't look so much to kick off incumbents or bring in people only because they have fresh ideas. I look forward to working with a council that maintains an interest in the community as it shifts its demographics, as well as working within changes in the social and the economic climate. Thank you.
We'll stick with question number two with Ms. Martinez-Rubin. For more than two decades, Panol's had a utility tax that provides 14% of the city budget. Measure C would continue this tax until the voters choose to rescind it. What is your position on Measure C? If rescinded, this would have a serious impact on numerous programs in Panol. Without this $2 million per year, which programs and services would you prioritize to be trimmed? Keep in mind that we're talking about losing $1 out of every seven.
Given the status of the city's budget, it's important that we bring it to a matter of being stable. We're still attempting to come back from the Great Recession that happened back starting in 2007. And so until the budget stabilizes, I don't foresee that we will have additional resources to provide the services that are very much additional, and services that people are clamoring for. We have to stay within budget. And so my position on Measure C is that I support it to the extent that we can continue having the funds that allow for some basic services to continue. Unfortunately, the language might keep people from voting for it because they believe in having the option to vote every time a measure comes up. But in the past two elections, the voters have approved this measure, and so they also recognize it necessary to continue having this tax that provides the $2 million that are needed.
Mr. Benwellis.
Measure C to me is a no-brainer. We've had this for quite some time, and it's not, the tax is not going to get any more. We're going to just keep the vote we have. You know, $2 million is a lot of money in our budget. We have a $14 million budget, 1.9 a piece from Measure S's, and the $2 million from our utility users' tax, and the rest is general plan. So this is a pretty important thing to be thinking about. Now, if it doesn't pass, we'll be going through what I already went through in the past during the downturn, where we're going to have to figure out how to budget from what we have. Back then, we had budget meetings almost every week, and we had budgets, one where we had no money and one where we had less. So I've been there and seen how this has happened. I think we would have to try to spread things out across the board in terms of cuts, because that's sort of what we did in the past. So we're able to do that, and don't get too crazy with using our reserve, because our reserve is usually one-time money. Once you use that, it's gone. So I would still want to do that unless there was something very extreme that we would have to do to replace it. But I think that Measure C is something we need to have. It's part of the things that we've been doing all along for the last few years, and it's kept up in play. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tombs.
Yes, Measure C provides about 14% of our general fund budget, so it is a significant piece of our budget. Now, Panol only gets about 18% of the property tax that folks pay on their bills, and that's much lower than some other cities get. El Cerrito, for instance, gets 24%. So that gap needs to be filled somewhere because we still have needs, we still have public safety needs, we still have services that we want to provide our residents, and we're the ones that have to fund that. Just because the formula back when Prop 13 was passed is different, that's not going to change. Therefore, I don't think that we should have an expiration on our utility users' tax. I don't see a time in the future where we're not going to want services, we're not going to want police services or fire services, or a pool, or, you know, other services in our community. And given that, I think that we do need Measure C, and we need to have it without an expiration. Thank you.
Mr. Minas.
Thank you. I'm in favor of Measure C. The utility user tax, as the prior speakers have noted, is an important part of the city's budget. I'd also like to make a note here that when the question says it's 14% of the city's budget, that's not necessarily completely accurate. It's 14% of the city's general fund, and I personally would argue and have argued in the past that in order to accurately calculate the city's general unbound revenues, you'd also need to consider the Measure S 2006 and 2014 revenues along with the general fund. If you do so, Measure C comes out to closer to 10% of the city's revenue. That said, 10% is still a significant amount. If it was rescinded, there would need to be major cuts made across the city. It would be my belief that it would be the most equitable to make those cuts equally across every department, rather than singling out any one department for favor or disfavor. I'm not necessarily sure that people get the cost of having this measure come up to a vote every six or eight years. I recognize the value to the community of having public input on taxes, but when city staff has to make two separate sets of plans for the budget for a given year, one with some revenue, one without, it makes their lives a lot more difficult.
Thank you, sir. We'll stick with Mr. Minas for the question number three. And by the way, I thank you for the correction to my numbers. The good people of Panol recently voted to institute term limits for their council members. Measure P was placed on the ballot last June to rescind the previous action and go back to the time of no term limits, but the voters rejected Measure P by a margin of almost 4 to 1. Even so, the issue is still a matter of debate all across town. Just between us, what are your thoughts on term limits in Panol?
I believe that as a general matter, term limits are a good and desirable thing. Because by default, in any political system, power tends to accumulate to incumbents and remain there absent an outside event. And if the incumbents are, you know, competent and well-liked and do their job well, that isn't necessarily a problem. But if there is a problem, it might be more difficult than perhaps it should be for new challengers to unseat the incumbents if there aren't term limits. It creates sort of a forced rotation of ideas. Because sometimes, no matter how good the incumbents are, no matter how great the various skills and qualifications that they bring to the position, new candidates can bring new perspectives and ideas that might not necessarily have been on the council, and people might be intimidated from running if they have to face up against a slate of all incumbents, knowing that they have the advantage of their incumbency and their past experience in city council to battle against. So I was against Measure P, which was a measure to repeal term limits, and I'm in favor of term limits remaining in the city of Panol indefinitely. Finally, I'd like to note that if a council member believes that their services are essential to the city of Panol, but they are free to run after a two-year break once their terms are limited.
Thank you very much. So the public understands when the red light goes on that their time is expired, but I've told them all that they will be given the respect and opportunity to complete their sentence. They try starting a second sentence, that's when we come down on them. Okay. Mr. Benwellis.
One of the things that happens when you're on the city council is when you think of the time that you spend, half the time, you are doing immediate city stuff, council meetings, our local committees within the city. The other half is spread across, what I mentioned before, the other 14 committees that are more regional in nature. So you have to learn how to not only deal with your council members, you have to learn how to deal with other city councils, county people, sometimes state people, people that are actually professional politicians. You know, we're all part-timers here. So that takes some time to learn how to do, and I only feel like I was kind of comfortable with some of these regional meetings for the last couple of years. I've been on for nine years, like I've mentioned. In terms of the term limits and Measure P, no matter how it turned out, this is always going to be my last term. So personally, you know, I could go either way. However, it's pretty important to know how to deal with these other entities outside of Panol that are really helped shape Panol. Like I mentioned, I've been on West Cap, I've dealt with the Wastewater Committee. I go to the school district and complain about various things like district dean and losing SROs and been successful in talking them out of those kind of things. And it takes time to learn that. And it's difficult to do at first, but after a while, you get it, but you've got to have the time in. I believe, I don't think it's going to be hard to have new people with only three terms do that.
Thank you. Ms. Tombs.
Yes, thank you. After I started serving on the council in 2015, I joined one of those regional boards and noted that the leadership of the Association of Bay Area Governments, or the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or Bay Area Air Quality Management District were all led by council members in this county that have been serving their communities for over 16 years. And it occurred to me that that's one of the unintended consequences of term limits that came about in 2008. I was in favor of looking at whether or not we wanted to look at rescinding it because of that. We weren't able to have that kind of a level of a conversation, but given that, you know, the electorate, you know, stated that they did not want to repeal term limits, I'm all in favor of staying the course on that.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Rubin, please.
I have favored term limits every time a measure comes up on a ballot, for example, with state government. And so when it came time to think about that locally, I supported that term limits exist. I think that there is a value to institutional knowledge and the relationships that are developed over the years between people who are professional court politicians and remain in office. But I also think that it's of importance and of value to have people bring in new perspectives. I think the duration of someone in office can be such that it keeps them from seeing the possible complacency or tunnel vision than what can develop, particularly when one invests so much time in a given project. I can take the example of putting together a paper or even a memo and spending so much time on it that I don't see my errors anymore or my reasoning that may not be as best as it can be. So I am in support of term limits.
We thank you on that. We will stick with Ms. Martinez-Rubin for question number four. As I mentioned before, you're going to hear a recurring theme, money or the lack thereof. So let's talk about that, especially the lack thereof part. Toys R Us, Kmart, and my personal home away from home, Orchard Supply Hardware, gone or on the way out. I mean, I don't know what to do. It's bad enough that West County no longer has a place to get their baby strollers and toys, their low-cost apparel and household goods, and the tools and garden supplies we can't live without. Panol, though, will be without the precious tax revenue that they depend on to fund police services, pothole repairs, fire stations, TV services, and senior center maintenance. So where do you suggest the council come up with the bucks to fill that void? And if you can't come up with the lost revenue, which programs and services would you suggest cutting?
I don't believe it's up to the council to come up with the bucks to make up the loss of revenue because of consumer goods. It is up to the council to develop policy that encourages more developers and business enterprises to come into Panol that's welcoming, and also to regard the plans, the general plan, that help balance the kind of services, development, land use, and business enterprises that would be in the city. I hope to not be in the position to have to decide what programs and services would need to be trimmed, because absolutely, the uncertainty about how sales go or how much revenue is generated from taxes in sales is one of those contexts that affects the basic services that could be provided. We come again to why the need for the UUT. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Minas.
Thank you, Don. This is a topic that I am particularly... This is a topic that I am particularly concerned about. As I stated earlier, with the user utility tax, just looking at the city's general fund alone isn't sufficient to see the extent to which the city relies on sales tax revenue because you also have to include measure S 2006 and measure S 2014 to get a proper sense of the city's reliance on sales tax revenue. If you do so, you'll find that the city gets about 40% of its unbound general revenue from sales tax. And one problem with that is, as this question states, when the big-box stores go out of business and another big-box store doesn't necessarily replace them, how does the city make up for that revenue? I think the city needs to shift its revenue structure away from the sales tax that it could do this in a number of different ways. Some of the ways that city staff have said that are allowed are potentially a parcel tax, a change of the user's utility tax, either in amount or in types of things taxed, and some other taxes that would be lesser by their nature, transient occupancy taxes and the like. I believe that the city should seek out new revenue sources and not seek to cut departments to fill the void left by the big-box stores going out of business. I don't think that's going to be sustainable.
All right, thank you. Ms. Toms.
Yes, thank you. The loss of Toys R Us, Kmart, and Orchard Supply are going to have a hit on our sales tax revenue. Mainly, that's coming from people outside of Panol spending money in Panol that leads our sales tax. Residents of Panol, we haven't stopped shopping, we just shop differently. So, you know, we're shopping online, having things delivered to our homes and the like. So we are still getting some sales tax out of that. However, I have asked our city manager to check with our tax consultant on a question that I had regarding online sales. And I don't, we haven't gotten that answered yet, but the question is, you know, some folks that shop online don't like to have things delivered to their homes for, you know, potential theft issues. So the question is, what if one of those places was made into a locker or, you know, a place where you could have your goods delivered and then after work you go pick them up? They have those at, I think Safeway has them, and I know Whole Foods has them. And the question is, if somebody from El Cerrito had their goods sent to Panol, who gets the sales tax? And so that's a question that we have gotten to our consultant, and when we get that answer, I'd like to share that with folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Wells.
I don't believe we can rely on taxes to solve our problems. We need to have incentive for businesses to come here. I believe that we should have, we should generate a economic development commission where we hire consultants, great to help us put this together, real consultants. Right now, if I were to read the criticism of some of our government leaders here, is there, because of the things we had happen during the downturn and recession, you know, a lot of the staff had to do multiple jobs, one of them being having to generate some of their own revenue. And I think that's kind of a hard thing to do when you're not used to it. I think we need to have a real professional come in and evaluate our situation and help us come up with ideas for incentives to generate business. Now, we're not totally out of losing everything, you know. We are going to get a new Safeway, we're getting a new CBS, we're getting Planet Fitness. You know, there are things that are getting built, but I think we need to figure out ways to have people come here more, whether we do it in the guise of a density bonus or a height bonus or maybe a little less parking because we're going to rely on public transportation. These are the kind of things that you do to pique a business's interest to come here. You know, when the Trader Dokes came, that was a rumor. They already turned us down, but there was a rumor that said they're coming, and then it kind of came true. Maybe we can do something like that.
Thank you very much. I'm going to throw you off for a loop by asking you a question that was slipped to me a few minutes ago. It's not on your cheat sheets there, but it's dear to my heart because when I tried to come in here today from Richmond, it took me a half hour on the freeway. My needle didn't even budge to tell me I was even going five miles an hour. How would you address improving the current traffic congestion on Panol Valley Road and the I-80 freeway ramps? Mr. Ben Wells.
Well, when the signal lights came in, we had negotiated with Caltrans to give us control of that, and they've sort of been hedging on that. I think we need to turn the signal off at Panol Valley Road because it's just having more problems there than not. I also really think we need to put some emphasis on having people like BART come up with an idea of helping us go have public transportation. I think we should have an E-BART up to the Crockett like they have out at Antioch. I've been on that, it's a great little train, it's quiet, it gets you there, and I think we should have something like that here in West County, Upper West County. We voted in the MR3 money last June, and part of that, West Cat is supposed to get some money out of that. And like we have the Lynx right now that goes to San Francisco, one of the plans is to have a Lynx-type run that goes to both Oakland and Emeryville. That would really help the congestion even on BART because, as you know, the Illinois BART station is the busiest BART station in the system because West County dumps themselves into there. So I think we need to be aggressive with the transportation entities to pay attention to us, just like we're getting the school district to pay attention to us now in terms of districting, and get us some decent public transportation that we all would benefit from.
Thank you. Mr. Menes.
I agree with Mayor Banuelos that a significant portion of the traffic issues are generated, frankly, by the metering lights leading on Panol Valley Road just due to the structure of that particular intersection. But as I'm sure you've observed at the past council meetings that this has been discussed, it is, there is a project somewhere in the process, we don't know whether it's just in the early planning stages or maybe in the middle planning stages, to widen the Panol Valley on-ramp going eastbound. And hopefully that will help, and I would urge everyone in the audience and watching tonight to contact their public officials and urge them to support this project because it's not just what people at the council meetings say, it's what the general public says is a priority that helps shape what actually gets done. At the freeway level, there are limits to what the city of Panol can do to improve traffic. I would urge the regional transportation bodies to accelerate their plan to bring a BART line from Richmond through to Hercules sometime sooner than 2040. If that can happen, then I believe that would bring a significant relief to congestion in the entire region.
Ms. Martinez Rubin.
Relief of traffic congestion is definitely a regional issue. There are people wiser than me at this point about how to address that, and evidently we haven't addressed it very well, at least not in the past decade that I have seen. Locally, certainly residents are feeling it in Panol. The matter of congestion specifically on Panol Valley Road is due because we haven't attracted the public to come in and shop at an entity or a business where we would like to have the sales tax. So there are those, you know, give and takes. Not everything has been resolved, most definitely, but we have to continue working with our regional transportation agencies to try to come up with some way to mitigate some of the problems that local residents are experiencing. So I would defer to working with transportation entities and traffic engineers and such so that we can see what has worked well in other cities and towns. I don't think this is an isolated situation, and we could learn from cities that have done well in addressing similar matters. Although we all know that in the Bay Area, it is a Bay Area-wide situation that we're dealing with traffic congestion, but at some point, we have to pick up and benefit from other cities that have done well in spite of it.
Ms. Toms.
Yes, solving the congestion problem on the I-80 is not going to be a single, there's not a single solution. There's multiple solutions, and those would include things like extending BART to Hercules. We have one of the most congested corridors, yet we don't have BART service through one of the most congested corridors in the Bay Area. The other thing is to encourage the train stop in Hercules, which would help folks get to Oakland and Emeryville and then up to Sacramento. The ferry that's proposed to stop in Hercules, that would help. And then, of course, additional bus services to the Lynx bus service, which runs from Oakland to the transit center in San Francisco. I've personally ridden it, and it's a lot more comfortable than BART. It's a great service, and I just, you know, if they had additional buses, these are buses that fill up, it's that good, and it's not too costly. But there's just a whole number of things in addition to encouraging businesses to allow their employees to telecommute or have differing hours so they're not on the freeway during the peak time. So, a number of issues.
Thank you. We'll stick with Ms. Toms for question number five. For all the rhetoric about how well the people of Panol work together, it's sometimes a fractious community. People seem to be sharply divided into factions to the point where many members of the community believe that their elected representatives aren't listening to them, and social media commentary has often become viciously hostile. At election time, there always seems to be a wedge issue to split the community. What can we expect you to do to reverse the negativity so we can work together to solve our problems?
Yes, you have observed a very unfortunate thing that we experience here in Panol, and that is the viciousness that does come across on social media. As far as I'm concerned, during the campaign, I'm doing my best to stay above that. I would like to argue the issues. Just because we have different views on issues doesn't mean that we need to disrespect each other. I hope that I can continue for another four weeks of staying positive and sticking with And, you know, I do my best to listen to the community, but I do understand that, you know, there are different ideas out there and that they come across very negatively.
Ms. Martinez Rubin.
I signed off on the, what I agreed to, the fair practices that all candidates had the option to sign on, to agree to have a fair and positive campaign, and I hope that I have modeled that. And when I have received negative comments, I have attempted to respond in a way that calls out that negativity and how that affects what we are striving to encourage, and that is positive participation and discourse that allows for how a democracy ought to work. In spite of differing opinions and varied interests, we are still to be representatives of everyone and in the interest of community, a community environment that is not hostile but is free of that negativity and encourages positivity and discourse. I hope that I have modeled some of that and continue to encourage people to participate in the open forums that we have. I've tried to do that as a member of the Planning Commission and other committees that I've been part of. It's great to be part of a group of people that act responsibly, fairly, and in a very civil manner and very respectful of each other.
Mr. Ben Wells.
As I've been going around town, I haven't seen a whole lot of this negativity. They want to know when the high school's going to be finished. They want to know if there's going to be any more new stores coming in. They want to know whether the Station 74 is ever going to open. Those are the things I'm asked. I haven't had any negativity, and in the past two times that I've ran, it was the same way. I have an advantage, I mean, an incumbent, because what you usually get is, hey, I've seen you on TV! You know, and they're very excited because both the people that watch city council, they watch on TV. I think that it's unfortunate that we do have some of this negativity. I am refusing to participate in it. I'm neither doing it or acknowledging it because I think the people that are truly vicious, to use that word, you can't win with them. You know, if they don't like you, they don't like you. So the best thing to do is just keep going and not worry about it. At the same time, when you look at social media, it seems like, it may just appear that you have thousands of people that don't like you, but I really don't believe it's that big a group. Like I said, I haven't seen a whole lot of negativity directly. So I think the best thing to do is just to be positive and just keep pounding through. My advantage is people know me, and so I'm banking on my experience and what I've already brought to the table, and I continue to bring to the table.
Mr. Menes.
I think this question ties back into my first point I made about qualifications, most especially the ability to listen. From what I've heard, talking to various people in the various groups around town, a lot of the conflict that's generated on social media that was generated around the measure P, measure that is generated around some of the various candidates, comes from a conflict between two groups in the city that unfortunately haven't been able to reconcile their disputes. Going back in history a bit, there were several members of the Panol City Council that were recalled back in 2008 for, depending on who you ask, engaging in a high-handed abuse of power interruption or simply exercising their rights as city officials to terminate a city manager they felt was ineffective. I feel that if we seek to just exclude any one group from city government by saying that they're shrill or negative or you can't really get through to them, that that's just going to continue to perpetuate this cycle of division and discord, and that we need to move beyond that and unify as a city in order to become better. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all the candidates for sticking with the time limits, making things move very smoothly so we should be able to get all of the questions taken care of without the TV cutting us off. For question number six, we will start with Mr. Menes. Like most cities, Panol's employees expect to retire with a pension from Panol. And like most cities, Panol has an unfunded liability for those pensions that every day eats a larger and larger percentage of the city's budget. In cities like Richmond, within a couple of years, that unfunded pension liability will approach 50% of the city's budget. The unfunded pension liability was the major cause of Vallejo and Stockton's bankruptcies. To keep people from mentioning Panol in the same breath as Stockton and Vallejo, what are your plans to take control of the pension liability before it takes control of you?
I would like to note first off that the city has, this year, begun doing some steps to deal with this problem. They've created an investment fund strategy to make sure that the city's resources that's investing to try and have enough generated revenue over time to pay off some of those liabilities are being properly spent, and they also have accountability at quarterly meetings. I think just this past month in September, there was a meeting where they talked about the returns on the funds that they'd invested in, and that it was a bit lower than the benchmark flat rate. And so I was able to ask why is the city investing more at the benchmark rate? They said they were shifting over to doing that. I would also like to note that due to decisions made by past city councils, the city has additional pension liability other than other cities. It took out $6 million in pension obligation bonds back in 2006 that were structured in a balloon structure. So right now, the city's paying $250,000 a year in interest and principal on the bonds. By 2033, it'll be paying closer to $1 million a year in interest and still the same $250,000 a year in principal. The city manager's staff and city staff are broadly as checked if a city cannot adjust its repayment plan to reduce the interest costs. I think this is a point of concern for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Banuelos.
Well, I tell what the city council's done already, and Rafael has kind of mentioned this briefly, we've adopted an IRS Section 115 pension trust where over time, we're going to be putting in up to $13 million to help stabilize the annual costs that are going to be going up with our pension. And the plan is to have it stretched to 2036 when the rates are projected to drop significantly. There's going to be a little blip in the 2020-21 year of time where it's going to go up There's going to be a little blip in the 2020-2021 year of time where it's going to go up, go up, and we're going to have to probably do something to be ready for that. But our hope is that we can generate enough revenue to have the money in that pension fund, pension trust, to help stabilize our costs.
Ms. Toms.
Yes, thank you. For those who aren't aware, that the city's portion of the PERS, the public employee retirement system, the city's share is going to be going up quite a bit, and that's to cover the obligation, the unfunded obligations that the city has. In addition to those increases, our employees are paying a much higher percentage than employees of other cities. That's something that we've been able to negotiate with our employee groups. It makes it more difficult for us to encourage employees to come to Pinole, or, you know, so that is an issue. But as the mayor mentioned, is that we have established a 115 trust. So, those times in, you know, the next five years, when we see significant spikes in the city's obligations for PERS, we will be able to draw down on that trust so that we can keep the city moving and operating as close to normal as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
The city has established a reserve to help address those unfunded liabilities, largely made up of the state of requirements, or by statute, by state law, the requirement to pay certain portions of public employees' pensions and benefits, and so I will continue to support that. When you mentioned Stockton and Vallejo, in case people have forgotten, it's a matter of keeping a city from the risk of bankruptcy, and so having reserves helps with that. Sometimes that requires transfer of funds from one part of the budget to another, which has also been done to some degree when there is more certainty about certain types of funds that come into the city. So, the investment funds, the reserves, continuing to look at opportunities where there can be a reduction in the interest that is paid on those long-term bonds or other obligations would be another way to try to determine or assess whether there is a way to save some money, to continue allowing for those reserves to be built, and always keeping on track with regard to what the state is doing. And one way that the city does that, or that cities do that, is to continue being actively involved in the California League of Cities, which has, serves as advisory to city staff and city councils on measures or otherwise statewide activities and other kinds of things that we have to be concerned about, to help locals address issues that are beyond local interest.
Thank you. Continuing with Ms. Martinez-Rubin, question number seven. Redevelopment funds from the state no longer exist. Pinole has six sites that fell under redevelopment. Those sites include the Collins House, Blackies, the Bank of Pinole, the Community Corner, the Shores Phase Two, and 811 San Pablo Avenue, which is near Sugar City. Hopefully, you all know where these are. When you get on the council, what vision do you have for these sites to either bring in development, community use, or, and this is an important part, money?
Great question. I would like to be on the council to have the time to really head through what the conditions are, not only within Pinole, but surrounding us, that would encourage developers to come in and bring the kind of blend of business and services and the enterprises that do keep money in our city. So, my vision is to stay in line with the interests of the city, to have services that are basic and are necessary for its residents, while at the same time, continuing to have a combination of business, recreation amenities that create a thriving city, an environmentally conscious one, and also provide some revenue. What that blend is to be discussed, certainly. My vision is a very general one, but it's not distant from what the general plan holds, which is to have a good mix that provides for a thriving city.
Thank you. Mr. Minnis.
To the best of my understanding, and I'm certain that Mayor Ben Wells and Council Member Toms will correct me if I'm wrong, the city has already disposed of the vast majority of its redevelopment sites, so this isn't really a germane question. I believe the assistant city manager was speaking at the last council meeting, or the one before that, on disposition of final sites. And so, discussing what sorts of uses the sites could have, or what sorts of revenue they could bring into the city seems misguided. They brought in revenue to the city as one-time revenue, which has gone into reserves and will not be under the city's control in the future.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Toms.
Yes, thank you. When redevelopment was dissolved, the assets that you mentioned were divided into two pots. One went to the housing successor for future affordable housing, and the other went for, through a long-range property management plan, went for economic development. So, the 811 San Pablo Avenue was a housing asset, and a request for development proposals has been issued, and that site would be for affordable housing. And there may be some housing funds that could be used to assist in that development. The Blackies and the Collins House are also housing sites, and those sites can be redeveloped. Collins House may be rehabbed, and perhaps the Blackies and the unit next door could be demolished and rebuilt for affordable housing. I'd like to see the Community Corner and the Bank of Pinole, which is divided by a strip of land owned by somebody else, developed as commercial, or it could be a mixed use. But I think the bank just has all kinds of, there's all kinds of potential for that structure to have a very interesting commercial area. And then, the Shores is another site that should be used for either light industrial business park.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Wells.
Right about the time I was transitioning from the Planning Commission to the city council, we had our zoning update and our general plan update, and the other thing that we did then, we generated specific area plans, one for Pinole Valley, one for Aitken Way, and one for San Pablo Avenue. These specific plans are designed to bring mixed-use development into these corridors into Pinole to do two things, one to generate commercial development, and one to, and the other to generate residential use. All these places that are mentioned in the question are in the very specific plan areas. All these places, at one time or another, relatively recently, have had people asking about them. So, there is interest, and I think what we want to do is to be sure that we get both, both some commercial development, and, you know, and these are all set up where we have commercial on the ground floor or residential on top. And we put in, in the specific plans, there are rules to how that's being done, and that way that the developments that will occur will be appropriate for Pinole's size. So, there are some height limitations. If they go to a certain height, they have to step further back from the street, so you're not having a big building bombard the street and create shadow lines, for example. So, like I said, we do have interest in all these, and I really hope that we can do our mixed-use projects that we're revisioning there for these places.
Thank you all. Question number eight, and then we'll start with Mr. Ben Wells. Safety is always a prime concern in just about every city across the country, and Pinole is no different. Pinole has its share of homegrown troublemakers, as well as those that slip into town unnoticed. From what you know about Pinole, just how safe is Pinole? Does Pinole need more police officers and patrols? Keep in mind, your police chief is sitting right over there. Does Pinole have too many police officers? If more is needed, how can you make this happen without affecting other city services?
In the past 22 years that I've lived in Pinole, I've seen police work that, in my mind, you don't see in other cities. This may sound kind of dumb and silly, but, you know, when you call the police in Pinole, they come. I lived in Richmond for a while, and for minor things, if you wanted the police to come there, you're calling about a neighbor working in the car in Pinole, and I get him to make sure he had a gun to shoot off so that actually he would show up. But in Pinole, we don't have that problem. When you call the police in Pinole, they come. We're at a position now where we have two spots that are going to be new police people that will, once they come out of the academy, we're going to be at our point for the first time in years where we have our full complement of police. Police are broken into three beats, and Andrea has a policeman that patrol. When you call the police, all three show up at your place eventually, you know, within a few minutes. The main whoever's working there comes, and they get backed up by the other two groups. That's, I went on a ride along before I became on the council, and it was really amazing to see the, how that works. The advantage we have now is that we have a really progressive police chief, who's come up with lots of really good ideas that I believe will even spread to other cities in terms of how well they'll work. A lot of crimes that happen in Pinole, not in Pinole, but in Richmond and San Pablo, get solved in Pinole. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
From what I know about Pinole, in the 25 years that I've lived here, I've always felt safe, and I have heard from residents that they feel safe even walking in Pinole. And I think that, for the most part, that is still true. In going around, door-to-door campaigning, and also talking with small groups, I have come across people who have been victims of theft or robbery, and of course, it feels like crime is so that much more bigger when it happens to one, so definitely we empathize with those individuals. But our chief of police has reported that our city continues to be a relatively safe city, and I was trying to remember, and I apologize for not being able to tell you, that we are pretty much either better or on par with a couple of other cities in California with regard to safety, and that is very helpful. Do we need more police officers and patrols? I will leave that up to the chief, who is the manager of that crew of people, to determine how best policing is done in our city. And if more is needed, how can we make this happen without affecting other city services? Again, I would leave that up to these experts in policing here, our chief and his crew. And I so much appreciate the community policing philosophy that he has brought to our city for it to continue to remain, for it to be a city where people can feel safe even walking around town.
Thank you. Mr. Minnis.
Before I begin on this question, I would like to note that I was in error on the prior question about the state of the sites that are under redevelopment, and I'd like to thank Council Member Toms and Mayor Ben Wells for correcting me on that topic. Now, from what I know about Pinole, Pinole is broadly speaking, safe, but it has some areas that are naturally going to be nexuses of crime, just because there are major shopping centers, there's a lot of cars left unattended in parking lots, and so naturally, that's going to draw people both from within Pinole and from nearby communities to commit crimes of opportunity, as it were. So, there's always going to be a need for a police force in Pinole. Right now, however, I believe, and my understanding may be incorrect on this, that we have a sufficient quantity of police to perform the necessary functions of policing, to patrol the number three on Fitzgerald Avenue and deal with the crimes that occur there, as well as to deal with crimes that occur elsewhere in the city outside of shopping malls, because some crimes do occur just in day-to-day life. If we needed more policing, I believe that we should seek to increase police staffing levels by increasing the revenue that the city takes in. Thank you.
Ms. Toms.
Thank you. We are very close to having a full staff of police on the streets. There's one in the academy that should be sworn in within a few months, and I think once that happens, then we can reevaluate whether or not we need more police on the street. But we need to become fully staffed before we can entertain that. As far as services, I think that we need to make use with what we have and see what other ways that we can improve our safety, whether it's through technology, camera, cameras, linking cameras to, you know, from citizens to make those available to police when they do investigations. The community policing that's done in our city is amazing. So, I think, you know, that's what we should do for now, evaluate it after we are fully staffed, to determine if we need to increase staffing.
Well, continuing with Ms. Toms for question number nine. Pinole has pretty much been built out. That is, without spilling over the city limits, there's not much room for further development. Now, and hopefully, we have embraced that idea, how do you see more development coming into Pinole? And what role will you play in bringing new businesses into Pinole? By the way, shouldn't those new development projects need to bring in good-paying career jobs with benefits for Pinole residents, along with truckloads of tax revenue? Explain to us how you have the solutions to all of Pinole's financial woes.
I'll try.
Minute and a half.
We have a number of areas in the city that are either vacant lots, or they're underutilized lots, or they're going to transition from one use to another, and that's really where our development sites are going to come into play. Just around the corner downtown, we have, you know, we have vacant lots, so we do have a lot of infill opportunities. What you'll see in the county, you know, throughout the region, is that we need to look inward to make improvements where we have opportunities to redevelop areas that are, you know, like I said, vacant and underutilized, or there, you know, may be a transition of uses. There will be a transition of use at some of the, in the shopping areas. We don't know if we're going to get new retail to take, you know, to go into where the Toys R Us, Kmart, and those kinds of uses, or we may need to look, you know, at other kinds of uses. So, we really do have the ability and the opportunity to look at expanding within our boundaries.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Wells.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, we have specific area plans, and right when we developed the specific area plans, the downturn occurred, so we never really got to kickstart those things into motion. The biggest area that's relatively untouched is the San Pablo Avenue area, where there was a lot of zoning changes occurring in terms of mixed use, where areas that were some, were commercial are now high-density residential. As you know, housing is a major hot button in the state right now, to the point where the state is almost paranoid in trying to put up as many things as possible in housing to the detriment of some of us, because they're trying to part their way into our own zoning. The mixed-use idea was to have both types of development covered, to generate commercial areas that would generate tax base for us, and to sort of solve our needs for residential development as well. Again, I mentioned earlier about maybe the possibility of coming up with incentives to go along with the mixed-use zoning, to attract developers. And I think with that type of thing, we could really generate good projects. We also have a lot of older developments that could be modernized, and I think we could do the same thing for them as well.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
The latter part of your question is, for an explanation of how I have solutions to all of Pinole's financial woes, I will admit that I do not have immediate solutions to all these financial woes. They're multi-level and complex. That's part of the challenge of being a council member. I can tell you that I also am interested in seeing more of the mixed-use development. As a planning commissioner, I have become acquainted, increasingly become acquainted with the benefits of that, and consider that the And consider that the commercial aspects of those developments, provided that they are more than retail sales, would be the type of development that would result in good-paid career jobs. As many of us are aware, sales jobs entry level are not necessarily those career-related jobs. But in bringing construction projects in, we do allow for the opportunity to people working in the trades to build their careers and therefore, continue progressing in that and being part of our community. And with regard to bringing truckloads of tax revenue, to be determined, my role would be to be an ambassador, along with my council members, of Pinot to encourage the kinds of businesses that would be embraced by residents, as well as would bring multiple types of services. We have seen that in what was planned as Business Park and now houses both recreational and medical services, for example.
Mr. Menes.
Thank you. I agree with the prior speakers that the city does have significant infill spaces that could either be redeveloped entirely, in the case of vacant lots, or redeveloped for higher-density uses, in the case of some lots that are maybe underutilized in their current usage state. However, I would like to note a possibility for increased revenue to the city, but I don't think has been brought up yet. And that is potentially the encouragement of small office complexes. It's been an item in the paper, not just lately, like this past week, but over the past months and years, that office spaces in the major cities is becoming increasingly expensive. As a result, workers are having to telecommute in from outside the region. I think that if we could have office space in the city of Pinot, that could potentially be a revenue source for the city that will be relatively stable and less vulnerable to economic fluctuations compared to retail sales outlets. And as Norma said, I don't have the solutions to all of Pinot's financial woes. No individual, one of us, does or can. That's why it's important to listen to everyone and to hear everyone's perspectives, so that together, we can solve Pinot's financial problems, because none of us can do it alone.
Continuing with question 10 with Mr. Menes. Libraries are great sources, not only for our young people to learn about the world, but also for regular adults. Pinot has a great branch of the county library system, but because Pinot has chosen not to subsidize their library, it's only open 24 hours per week. And so to keep the library open 35 hours per week, someone needs to find an additional $130,000 per year. Did any of you bring your checkbooks tonight? Oh, nobody. So, if not, in the grand scheme of things, where would you prioritize library services?
I would prioritize library services extremely highly, below just police and fire. And here's why. I believe that the library, in a very real sense, is the heart of the community. The community has community gathering spaces for youth, in the youth center, in the swim center, in the high school, in the playhouse. It has gathering spaces for seniors in the senior center. But for working-age adults, there's not really a natural community gathering space other than the library. Furthermore, in the city communicating with the community, aside from the city's website and Pinot TV, the main way that the city can communicate with the community is through the library. People go to the library to get information. They expect to have information there. And I think that the library only being open every other day on weekdays, both A, greatly reduces its usage among the population, making it far less useful as a community space than it could be, and B, undermines sort of our sense of community. People don't necessarily want to go there, because they'll say, "Oh, well, maybe the library's not open today. I should go somewhere else." And that's a problem at all levels for our community. It's a problem at the high school, where students don't know whether they can go to the library on a given day for tutoring or not, without checking first. It's a problem for adults who want, say, tax information during tax time. It's a problem in general, and it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Toms.
Yes, during the downturn in the economy, the county limited library services for all cities and all areas, unless that city was able to come up with $130,000, or approximately that much, take over maintenance of the facility in order to get the additional 11 hours. Pinot has been in a position now where we're starting to see some additional revenue, both in our property taxes climbing, so that we may be able to come up with that. One of the other council members and I have been meeting with the library, with the county librarian and the city manager, to determine, work out all of the details in expanding the library hours and taking over maintenance. And we're going to be continuing that conversation. So when we bring it to the council, it will take about six months for the library to staff up in order to increase, but I believe that's going to be the next, I believe, I'm one of five council members, but I believe that's going to be the next service that gets returned to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Norm. Martinez-Rubin, please.
Thank you. It's encouraging to hear that library hours will be extended and expanded. The library is a wonderful resource, educationally and also as a community venue. I was about to say that although we in Pinot consider it our library, it is a library that includes an area that is also for unincorporated areas like Montelven and Bayview. So although it happens to be in the city of Pinot, and perhaps that's the pride that we have because of it, because of where it's located, it also is up to the county library system to consider the other geographic areas, which is part of the library service system. So when we can have conversations to talk about sharing the costs of maintenance, et cetera, for libraries, it's going to be that much better, so that every area that is serviced also contributes its proportionate share of costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benwellis.
I think having more hours of the library is very important. You know, Pinot has a pretty rich history and tradition, and sometimes you don't get to hear about that unless you go to the library. Our own Historical Society has regularly had exhibits in there, where you can go and take a look at things. And I think that's all part of the flavor that we have in Pinot. I think we need to put a priority on, and I'm telling you, these are hours. And like Maureen was saying, I think we're going to be able to see a way to do that. I do want to be careful, though, because when you deal with the county, it's kind of like when you buy shoes and you decide to buy these shoes, but you want to get the belt and the purse, too. So we want to make sure that we're paying for what we want to pay for, but I don't think we're in a position to take over the entire library, because that's one of the things that I'm feeling that they were going to want us to do. Hercules built their own library, but they had to raise the money for that. We're not in that position. But I do believe that we need to have more hours. And this came from one of the factions we talked about. You know, for all the things that go on, one of the ideas that came out of one of the groups was the idea of extending library hours. I was totally for that. So I do believe that we're going to be seeing this occur.
Thank you. For question number 11, we'll stick with you, Mr. Benwellis. Pinot Fire Station 74, always a hot button topic. It's been closed since 2011. Since its closure, there have been continued efforts to reopen the station. Pinot firefighters are like the rest of us and expect to be paid for their services, though. Is there a need to reopen Station 74? If the people determine there is a need to reopen Station 74, where would you look to find the funding to pay these fine, upstanding servants of the people?
This is probably the big hot button of the entire city. When the station was built, it was built with then-redevelopment money, but there was no money there to run it. And eventually, previous councils used up what reserve we had to keep it going, to the point where there was nothing left and we had to close it. I think that keeping it open or reopening it would be something where we could have a series of baby steps to do it. 75% of the calls in Pinot Valley are medical calls. We have tossed around over the years, an idea of having an EMT station, to have that service in order to serve that need. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get the firefighters' union to go with that with us. They want to have a fully open fire station, and you know who to blame them. But I think that, this is the only time, and I'm not a really big tax guy, but I think this is one of the things where we're going to have to have the people decide. I think ultimately, we're going to have to have some sort of a ballot measure to see if the people will put up money to get it open. And I would be open to having it as a two-faced thing, phase one being an EMT station, and phase two being a full fire department, fire station.
Thank you, Ms. Toms.
Yes, along those same lines, I think we need to evaluate the calls for service that are coming out of Station 73, to verify whether or not we're getting more medical calls or fire calls. But we also need to look at the big picture, is that Pinot Fire doesn't operate separately. We're part of Battalion 7. So that takes into account the calls for service that we assist with, and they assist us in Rodeo Hercules Fire, and then with the fire station in El Sabrante. So it's not just, we can't look at it as the Valley Fire Station only serving the Valley, because when calls go out from Station 73 and say they're in the Valley, they're not available for folks in Old Town, or to assist if there's something in Rodeo. So it really is, we need to make sure that if we do go to the citizens to ask for additional revenue for Station 74, that they understand that it's a big picture. It's for the whole area, not just the Valley. But yes, I think that we're going to have to find a separate revenue source to pay for it. And again, if we do baby steps to get there, you know, that's a way.
Thank you, Mr. Menes.
I think that there is definitely a need to reopen Station 74. I went on a ride along with the fire department a few weeks back, and they showed me the extent of the service area that they have to cover. Part of the problem is simply that there's a natural bottleneck around Pinot Valley High School, that when there's students are getting out of school, or there's rush hour, it's literally impassable for a fire truck. So if there's not a station open in Pinot Valley, and there's a fire, or a medical emergency, or what have you, fire's not going to be able to get there for a while. If there was a station, it would be more likely that that was the case. Furthermore, as council member Toms noted, we're part of a battalion of mutual aid. And with just one fire engine in our unit, we limited fire staffing on top of that. We're a net drain on that mutual aid. That works to our detriment as a city, and to our detriment to our reputation in the community as well. Finally, I would note that even though the majority of calls the fire department receives are medical calls, there's a risk in just opening up the station as an EMT station, because there's an expectation among the public, that when there's an open fire station, it's, you know, a full-fledged fire station, there'll be a fire truck there that can put out fires. So if there's a fire, and people wait a little while, call the fire department, because they think, "Oh, the station's open," they'll just send a fire truck over right away, and they only have an EMT truck. Then we run into the same problem we would if we didn't have a station at all.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
There is a felt need among some people in the city of Pinot, that there is a need to reopen the Station 74. What the city has to do is analyze that need, along with data that supports it. And that data includes a comparison of response times before Station 74 closed and afterward. So that's part of the equation here, to assess whether there is that possibility of opening it. Not only that, candidates were given the information from city staff, that it's an estimated $2.5 to $3 million annually to operate a station with about 13 to 14 crew in three shifts, the maintenance, the equipment, and the ongoing training that has to be maintained annually. And so the question does become about where do we obtain that funding? And although it may be a hot button issue, the question about funding is not necessarily shared among all residents at this point throughout the city. And so we do have to eventually put it out to the voters, as to whether they are willing to pay additional taxes to support an open station. And not only that, to sustain it ongoing.
Continuing with Ms. Martinez-Rubin on question number 12. Code enforcement helps to ensure graffiti removal, as well as protection from blight, unregistered vehicles, garbage accumulation, unsightly furniture or appliances outside the home, overgrown weeds. That sounds like my house. These are just the tip of the iceberg, and without sufficient code enforcement, the community suffers. Is Pinot's code enforcement department sufficiently funded? If not, where would you find the funds to properly fund it?
The answer to your first question is easy. No, the Pinot code enforcement team or the department is not sufficiently funded. It hasn't been sufficiently funded in the past four years. And in the proposed budget for 2018-19, there is a full-time equivalent that's in the budget, meaning that there would be a full-time code enforcement officers dedicated for this task. But until the city actually hires someone, it relies on this available staff to address a little bit over 100, not 130 cases that have stemmed from code enforcement complaints by residents over the past several years. And in doing that, it means that they are working with the staff that are available to address a matter that requires building of a case to eventually go, if necessary, to legal action to indeed enforce the code. Where would we find the funds to properly fund it? One of those is the UUT, ongoing. And beyond that, it would be, I suppose, special types of grants, if they're at all available, now that redevelopment that was once available to address blight is no longer. So another opportunity to try to identify creative ways to do so, and I would be working with my fellow councilpeople to come up with some of those answers.
Thank you, Mr. Benwellis.
We had a code enforcement department that was proactive until the downturn and the subsequent recession. After that, it was more reactive. Nothing really happened unless someone called and complained. I think that one of the places we could find funds, I agree, the UT would be one, but I think this could be something that could come out of building permit fees. I would think that per permit, it wouldn't be a huge amount. It would be sort of a sliding scale in order to have, depending on the size of the project. But code enforcement is an element of building and planning departments, and I think that would be a way to do that. I know, like you, every time I hear code enforcement, I have an urge to go home and mow my lawn. But I think that with funding, we'll be able to be more proactive like we were in the past. I also want to just throw in as part of this, that the code enforcement originally was in planning, then it was a part of the police department, as part of some of the ways to save money. And we're transitioning back to planning, which I think is a good thing. I love the police department, but the people that were doing it at the time were a little too excited about doing code enforcement. And I saw this in my own court, where it almost looked like a drug bust was going on. All they're doing is doing a code enforcement rail inspection check. So hopefully, we won't have that in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Menes.
I agree with the prior speakers that code enforcement is underfunded. And I would also like to note in addendum to Norma's comment, that the full-time equivalent position that the city has in its budget is probably going to end up being filled by a contractor, because the salary rate the city is offering for that position is not necessarily going to be sufficient to entice a full-time equivalent employee to want to work with us permanently. So we're also going to run into the costs of having a contractor longer-term linked to that. to that. I think partially, the question of code enforcement depends on the desires of the community. Does the community actually want proactive code enforcement? Do they want the city going out there and saying, you're not mowing your lawn enough? Do something about that. You're doing this or this or other thing wrong. Do something about that. Because if people do want that, then I think the city should seek out revenue for it. But if people are essentially fine with the current reactive mode, then I think it could perhaps be a somewhat lower priority. But I don't know. I don't have polling on this topic, so I can't say for certain one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toms.
Yes, I think our community does need funding for code enforcement. Most people that have code violations or code complaints are willing to work with the city on correcting it as soon as it comes to light. Most folks don't want to be that neighbor that, you know, has their weeds too long or, you know, leave their garbage cans out in the street for a couple extra days. So most people comply as soon as they're contacted by staff. Right now, we can only be reactive. The city sends out code enforcement and opens cases when there's a complaint that's received. And at this point, you know, with limited staff, that's how we can react and we can get the word out that folks who have concerns about neighbors can, you know, submit a complaint. There's a link on the website in order to do that. At some point, it would be good to, you know, include in our community guide some tips for folks to avoid code enforcement complaints, like reminders to pull your garbage back and to mow your weeds. And the fire department will be going through next year and doing some more proactive reminders about mowing weeds and weed abatement and that sort of thing.
Thank you. And for question number 13, we will stick with Ms. Toms. Contra Costa County has 23 charter schools, 14 of which are in West County and 12 in Richmond. One of the other two is here in Pinot and the last is right behind Toys R Us in El Sabrante. When charter schools are opened, it frequently becomes a very divisive issue in town. Even though Making Waves Charter School is completing its new 133,000-square-foot, $22 million facility near Hilltop, near the Parkway, they recently purchased the old Doctor's Medical Center on Appian Way. As a private citizen, what is your position on charter schools coming to Pinot? And then as a council member, would your position change?
My position as a private citizen and a council member remains the same. The taxpayers of our community, our school district, have invested almost $2 billion in rebuilding, revamping our schools. That's through the series of bond programs that we've done, one of which is Pinot Valley High School. And those schools were built based on population projections and attendance. When we get charter schools that come in, that attendance is skewed and it changes the population of our schools so that there's excess capacity, possibility of closure. It really doesn't suit our investment well. I do have some concerns about the purchase of Doctor's Medical Center. In our general plan, we have that site identified for housing in our housing element. And if that can't come to fruition, we would be obligated to find other sites in order to comply with our housing requirements that are given to us from the state. So I do have some concerns about that. I have voiced them with our city manager to determine what we can do as council members as far as, you know, that charter school moving forward, if we have any say in it.
Thank you, Mr. Menace.
As a private citizen and as a council member, should I be elected? My position on charter schools coming to Pinot would be one of opposition. As Councilmember Toms just noted, having charter schools come to Pinot throws off the projections that were made for the usage of the new schools that have been built and are being built right now, in the case of Pinot Valley High School. But there's also other risks associated with charters. Take that average daily attendance. Charters gain money from the state for average daily attendance, the same as your regular public school would, but they're not required to contribute to their teachers' pensions the same as regular public schools are. Therefore, charter schools increase the proportion of our schools' resources going to paying off pension debt while also, at the same time, reducing the amount of resources that they have to do so. Finally, I would note that even good charter schools, ones that, you know, are open to the community and strive to create a well-balanced school, by their nature are going to draw a disproportionate selection from the schools, often more motivated students or students whose parents are wealthier and so on. And that will also have an impact on public schools, separate from the revenue argument.
Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
I'm thinking about how this question requires one to think in two camps almost. I can see the charter schools' interest as being a business entity and they must consider that Pinot is a good market area for them to draw in the students that would fill their schools. So there's something to be learned about the people behind charter schools with regard to the business aspect of it. I wish, however, that they didn't exist if only our own school district had the quality of education and support that would have students performing at great level, which we know, generally speaking, it doesn't. And so they do offer an alternative to parents who don't see that our school district is supporting its students. And a very small example is the student-teacher ratio that is so large that particular needs of students not performing at grade level have to be attended to and teachers are not available to do so. As a council member, I would have to consider different aspects of the benefits, the pros and the cons of charter schools further. I'm not certain that my position about them would entirely differ as to what I have mentioned and more for me to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Wells.
This is an interesting thing because I have some direct experience with charter schools. But first, where I get started, I'm disappointed at the polarization of opinion amongst people of charter schools. Either you completely love them or you completely hate them. In my mind, a charter school is a tool, just like the district has other tools in the hopes of educating their kids. And granted, this came about because, and it's not just our district, but nationwide, there were deficiencies in the education. In my personal experience, I have three kids. Nick's now 26. My middle daughter, Mallon, is 22. She's just graduated from Yerkes La Boye. And my youngest, Emily, is a senior Pinot Valley high school. When Nick was in elementary school, he had a tough time at the El Dorado. My wife, we pulled him out. My wife homeschooled him, actually twice, once in elementary school, once in middle school. And then we heard about a charter school, a charter high school that started up that was helpful to kids. And so we put him in there and he thrived. He thrived because the charter school was small enough where he had individual attention. That charter school was interesting because it wasn't the stereotype, oh, the only rich kids go to charter schools. All the kids that the district couldn't deal with in other schools got dumped there. But at the same time, the teachers that were there were motivated and they brought people out of their own low self-esteem and their people thrive from that. And my son thrived. He was not a regular public school kind of guy. My daughters, you know, they liked the football games and the homecoming dance and all the kids. So when I asked her, are you going to charter schools? She said, oh, no. We're going to be going, we're going to the middle school. We're going to Pinot Valley. I said, okay. So they went and they thrived in what they had. It really depends on the kid. And that's what parents have to decide for their own kids and have to decide on charter schools. Now, here as a council member, and I've told this to several of the school board members that are running, the district needs to come up with an oversight board for charter schools. A lot of the charter schools aren't following their own charter. Am I out of time?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we need to do that. And I can give you an example. Pinot Valley, the charter school, Pinot Middle School, is one of the ones not following their own charter.
All right. I've got two remaining questions. We've got a limited amount of time. Give me two seconds. I'm going to reset the clock here. Because we have a limited amount of time, we're going to limit you one minute for these last two questions. So I made them particularly hard. These are questions that were slipped to me in secret. Does Pinot have an affordable housing crisis? How will you address this when a developer comes to town? Will you require affordable housing as a part of that project? Mr. Ben Wells.
This year was the first time that a house sold for $1 million in Pinot, which sounds like a great deal for the person that sold the house. But it concerns me that people won't be able to afford housing in Pinot, like they can't have a lot of place in the Bay Area. So I think affordable housing is important. We have ordinances in effect in town now where certain percentages of housing in this bill has to be affordable. And I think we have to make sure we maintain that, maybe increase it a little bit. So again, we had had affordable housing in the past. Some of it is in the process of expiring and then, you know, developers that built it want to make money now, so sometimes they're not keeping. You know, we have requirements from the state where we have RENA numbers, which are the numbers that say we have to have so much affordable housing in town based on our size. Usually, the numbers are pretty screwed up, but we still have the obligation. So I do believe we have to have that. And affordable housing, not just low income, there are several levels. And so we're quickly coming to the position where people with six-figure incomes will be able to qualify for affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Menace.
I believe that affordable housing is an essential part of a community. If you just let the market set housing rates, it will benefit individual property owners, certainly. But at the same time, it can also lead to situations where the people who have lived in neighborhoods for generations can no longer afford to live there, either because their rents increase massively, because their landlords want to sell the properties and capitalize on the gains in the property market, or because the raised value has led to their neighbors, say, being more vigilant about code enforcement, maybe focusing on things that wouldn't have been focused on before. I think that affordable housing, while essential and important and part of many of the city's objectives, can't solve the problem alone. We also need to look at measures to protect the city's renters, such as unjust eviction protection. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
Affordable housing is definitely a necessity here in town. Since being in the Bay Area, we know that people have extremely long commutes to areas where they can't afford housing. I was recently talking to a renter right behind our own city hall who has to have two jobs in order to afford living here as a renter. And the opportunity to have a home, such as the property that he manages, is not there for him. So to the extent that the city can continue to enforce its ordinance about having developers have a certain percentage of affordable housing in different levels, I would definitely support that.
Thank you. Ms. Toms.
Yes, I think having housing opportunities for people of all, the whole spectrum of income, is really important. You know, we have single-family ownership opportunities and we have rental opportunities. I think that along the San Pablo Avenue corridor and places where we have opportunities for infill development, we do need to get affordable units in there, whether it's the private developers that are developing. We need to get a portion of those that are going to be restricted, affordable units. And then like the housing successor or city-owned properties that we have to develop at 811 San Pablo Avenue, that can be all affordable. And there's a lot of opportunities. And there's opportunities to assist in financing these affordable housing projects, both with the state, our housing, successor housing fund, and other sources.
Thank you. Our last question before our closing statements. Ms. Toms, what do you feel the priority needs of Pinot will be in the next two years?
Can you repeat that question?
What do you feel the priority needs of Pinot will be in the next two years?
Thank you. I think that in the next few years, we're going to have to really work on the city's budget and coming up with stable revenue sources so that we don't have these, you know, go through these periods where, you know, we have a utility users' tax and then we don't have it. But then, you know, we might have it if the voters approve it and then we might not. And, you know, just this instability of our revenue. That's why I think it's important that we pass Measure C now so that we can get through fiscal year 2021 without dual budgets, you know, a budget with the revenue and a budget without. You know, I think it's important, our citizens and our employees deserve to know that we have revenue, that we have programs, and that we have services that are going to be stable.
Thank you, Mr. Menace.
I think that the needs the city of Pinot is going to face over the next two years are going to be broadly similar as the needs that it has faced over the past decade. It's going to need police services. It's going to need fire services. It's going to need public works, maintaining and where the funds are available, rehabilitating roadways and parks and city services. But I also think, and I agree with Councilmember Toms on this, that the city is not necessarily going to be able to meet any of those needs if it continues to be so heavily reliant on the sales tax. Because the sales tax is by its inherent nature variable. And it's more likely than not, we're going to be in a recession soon, so it's likely to be decreasing. That's why I urge all residents of Pinot to vote for Measure C, the utility user tax, because without it, the city would be even more reliant on sales tax.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Wells.
Yeah, we need to pass Measure C for the same reasons that we've all said. I do think we need to generate some more commercial development, so we do increase the sales tax. It's not going to, it's not going to go away. We're going to have to have that. One of the things, though, that's really important to me is why we all live here. Pinot is really unique in terms of its small-town feel and a lot of cities around us don't have that. And I think we need to really be cognizant of maintaining that feel because that's part of why we all are here. There are forces out there at the state level that really don't care about that. They just want to solve their housing problems by usurping our own planning and zoning requirements. And I'm really concerned about that. I've written lots of letters and signed a lot of things, fighting against assembly bills that have been trying to do that. You know, those last ones kind of slipped in with BART, but that was not without a fight and we intend to keep that going. So to me, that is one of the primary things that we have to do in the next two years to maintain our own soul.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
In the next two years, priority needs of Pinot are definitely to stabilize the budget or get to a point where we can see beyond just having to have a budget that is balanced. Related to that is coming to some discourse and resolution about this big question that seems to divide some residents and that's the matter of fire services and whether we have them as adequate as necessary. And attempting to be more responsive from city hall to the public so that there is that matter of having people informed about why decisions are made as they are and what processes are required in order to be responsive to residents' needs. So continuing to be open and continuing to inform the public about why we need them, their support, and also their endorsement of the decisions that are made by the city council.
Thank you. We've covered 16 subjects or 16 questions here. We're running out of time, so I'm going to give you a minute and a half each for your closing statement to convince us all why you are the best person to serve on this council. Ms. Martinez-Rubin.
Thank you. My priorities are strong, sustainable police and fire services to ensure the safety of Pinot, no doubt. The maintenance of infrastructure that supports environmental health and community development and community development that has land use balanced with bad development and recreational and business. and business and housing amenities for residents, kinds of things that we've been talking about that cost taxpayers money, but also that reflect how their taxes are used. My career in public health and as an independent program evaluator has often required that I ask the questions about what services exist. Are they being provided to the intended users? Are they being provided well and sufficiently? And if so, how well is that being done? And if not, why not? And how can we redirect the direction that we have agreed upon before to address or isn't being addressed and what citizens feel still requires improvement? So being open to that continually is part of my interest, and I respectfully ask for your vote to represent you on the city council, knowing very well that my availability and my ability to be responsive to you as well as to work well with other council members, other regional and state entities is absolutely necessary were to address the needs of the residents adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Menes.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking all the viewers at home and in the audience. Even though we've covered a number of topics relatively briefly, it's been a long time. I appreciate you're taking the time out of your busy lives to watch this. I'd like to sort of tie together the different strands of what I've been saying tonight. People might say, "What does the library have to do with city revenues? Have to do with a better civic discourse?" I think all these things are essentially linked. Right now, people are disinclined to support increased revenue for the city because they don't see what concrete benefits the city provides to them. There are signs that go up where the city repaves a segment of roads, saying the city's repaved this, or when it rebuilds a bathroom, saying they rebuilt the bathroom. I think that extending hours for the library would be a pleasing way for the city to concretely show that it is doing something to help the community. But even once it's clear that the city is doing things to help the community, if the community is divided, it's much less likely that any revenue measure will succeed. We see this with Measure C, where Penole Fair Government has declined to endorse it because of the process of how Measure C was created and also because they felt it didn't raise sufficient revenue. I think that we need to talk to everybody so we can avoid those issues in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Toms.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to first say thank you to Mr. Gosney for coming and moderating this and the volunteers from the high school. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for participating. I think it's important that we hear from everybody. And also, thanks to citizens for coming out that are in the chambers and those watching on TV. I respectfully ask for your vote so that I can serve on the Penole City Council and continue the goals that I have of continuing to stabilize the city budget for the long term, bring back programs and services that were lost during the economic downturn as stable revenue becomes available. I'd like to invest in roads, bicycle, and pedestrian safety improvements, develop vacant and underutilized parcels along San Pablo Avenue, including for affordable housing and commercial development. I'd like to see us further implement our climate action plan, prepare the community for response to and recovering from a natural disaster. I'd also like to see us improve our communication. I think that's something that we can always, always improve our communication, and that would go a long way into uniting our citizens. So thank you.
And Mr. Ben Wells.
Thanks, Don, for coming and moderating. And I want to thank also my colleagues here. I think everyone did a really good job. Lots of different things, lots of different opinions, but it was good. My nine years on the council and the previous four years on the planning commission, I was able to do a lot of things, and I think that my record speaks for itself. I learned a lot from my colleagues. I learned a lot about sound, careful decision-making through the times when we were literally in the abyss. So I respectfully ask for your vote and so I can continue on. Like I said, with term limits, it's my last term, but it was always going to be that. I'm going to do something a little bit different here. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have a lot of candidates here. I'm kind of thinking that because of that, we're the candidates to pick. I think that people not showing up is a slap in the face to the city and to this resident. So I'm going to call them out. I fully expect them to be at the high school next Wednesday, or we're really going to know what kind of candidates they are. We're not going to vote for Fannoms. Thanks.
I thank you all very much. You know, the ballots for vote by mail are coming out this week. All too frequently, voters, when they look at the list of candidates, it's like going to the liquor store to buy a bottle of wine. They pick somebody based, or they pick that bottle of wine based on what is the coolest-looking label there. They look at the signs that are on your streets. Who's got the nicest-looking sign? They look at the mailers that you hand out. It's, wow, that is pretty cool. Tonight, though, the public has had an opportunity to learn a little bit more about each one of you, where you stand on the issues, one of the subject matters, how well do you know the subject matter, so they can make a more informed decision. And that is the purpose of these kinds of forums. So I thank you all very much for showing up, for giving us your responses, for helping to inform everybody here, and especially for keeping on time most of the time. I say thank you all very much, and I also want to thank the city staff that helped me prepare for this, the people in the back room that are making sure that this all goes out on TV, because they're doing a great job on that, and they helped set this up. And also, Ms. Zoya Allen and Luke Schultz from Penole Valley High School, and Mr. Kimby Kleiman, their principal, who directed them here. By the way, make sure you get your credit for our community service hours on this, right? Yes. Get something out of the deal, aside from a couple bottles of water. But again, I thank you all very much for attending. And now, we turn things back over to Penole TV so they can go on with their regularly-scheduled program. Thank you again.